I want to call to order the Joint City Council meeting and Open Space and Trails Committee Workshop. It is Thursday, November 7th, and it is 5:00 PM. Public comments and announcements. Anybody interested in speaking? 2.0 discussion, 2.1 presentation regarding the TechDOT Landscape Pluripar project as funded through the Green Ribbon Program.
Gail.
All right, Mayor, Council, pull up my presentation here in open space. This is in response to our October meeting where there were some questions on the Green Ribbon, the landscaping project. So I'm going to walk through, made a note here that, and we ended that meeting, Council wanted to see further information as far as landscaping, if that landscaping portion of the asset could be enlarged, and also review maintenance cost. So what I'm going to walk you through tonight during the workshop session, and you know, please stop us. We also have in the audience with us Brandon, Brandon is with Clark Condon. He's the landscape architect that was responsible for the designs and the plans that went over to TechDOT and is working in coordination with the contractor and our TechDOT representative in landscaping. So the agenda tonight would be to review the process of the 146 landscaping project, how we got here, the Green Ribbon program a little bit, and then Brandon's going to take the wheel a little bit and walk you through all of the slides that show where the components in the landscaping project are along the 146 corridor. We'll talk a little bit about the TechDOT response at a follow-up meeting with them in regards to Council's questions and direction. We will talk about the maintenance cost and then end our discussions with any questions and trying to get further direction from Council. So in reviewing the process, just wanted to take, I know there was a lot of comments in that last meeting about different elements of where we got to the point of the Green Ribbon program. So this actually started back in 2016. We originally worked with a consultant called SWA to come up with a branding plan. We came up with different components and we began just a number of meetings back and forth with TechDOT to get as much of the branding, Seabrook-specific elements built into the original bid package. So that was ongoing. SWA was the consultant at the time. There was plans drawn up. They were put into the original 146 project. That's where our logo came into play. That's where the sailboats came into play, and some reforestation. We didn't have landscaping at that point. A funding agreement was put together and EDC stepped up for $1 million. The offset of the .1 is $160,000 from the 2017 grant that Open Space helped for TechDOT rightaways. And the Bay Area scheme was born. So TechDOT agreed to take on and burden most of the costs for what we have as far as our sailboats, our logos on the sidewalls, the coping that was special, and we named it, and they agreed to call it the Bay Area Scheme. These are some of the exhibits that came from SWA originally. So as you can see, starting in the upper left-hand corner, these were all conceptuals at the time. And again, the original bidding in 2017, 18 with TechDOT did not include anything. This was conceptual. All we had was riprap. So these were just designs that were put into place. These are the conceptuals that ended up being the true mock-ups for the sidewalls that we have today. And the agreement with TechDOT, which is what we call the AFA or Advanced Funding Agreement, we outlined for the $1 million that the city would pick up the backlit star medallions. The state would pick up the logo and cells on the walls, the new coping design. They'd also pick up a different look on our traffic arms and powder coat those white. The city in turn would pick up the pavers, the riprap material, infill, built-up curb barrier that's underneath our underpasses now, as well as nautical bollards. The process was bid by TechDOT. Again, this is a TechDOT project. The bid came in, and what blew the budget was the riprap material. So the riprap came in extremely high over budget. That had to be removed from the project, and TechDOT began another conversation with the city to look at a possible option, which is their Green Ribbon program. That's where we transferred some of the elements out, and those were the landscape edging. We were able to build in additional landscaping, keep the trees or reforestation areas, add irrigation, keep the bollards and riprap all into additional funds that they had available. So in a few minutes, I'm going to turn it over to Brandon, but this is where Brandon and Clark Condon came into the story. So when that got removed from the Weber contract and we went to do a new contract with TechDOT, we went out for bid. Clark Condon was awarded that. Council approved that bid. We went into drawing some plans with the consultant, and then he began working directly with the landscaping contact under certain standard specifications, setback requirements, maintenance considerations that we talked about as far as the city's budgets. So Brandon, I'll let you kind of pick up from there, and then we'll go into the plan sets.
All right. Thank you again, Gail. Again, as Gail mentioned, my name is Brandon Whitaker, Project Manager, Clark Condon, one of the landscape architects. So just to reiterate, you know, our limit of work here, starting at Red Bluff going down to the channel. We had taken the original design that was improved and, at this point, implemented it into TechDOT drawings that met their standards and requirements and offsets. So as we go through here, we can discuss what made it and what we had to modify depending on TechDOT's comments. So these are some of the renderings that we did based off the updated design after going through with TechDOT. So part of the riprap to help save costs was taking some of that riprap out and putting some planting up under the overpass here at Nassau Road 1. So we did that utilizing plant material that TechDOT allows. You know, we only have so much of a pallet that they would allow being that they're funding a portion of this. So we used native plant materials as best we possibly could, utilized TechDOT's plant pallet for trees, reforestation materials. So here are just a few images that we provided based off what you will see at the end of the plant material construction. Another closer view, we did utilize multiple styles of riprap to help with that cost as well. The original riprap was a little smaller, a little bit more decorative. I believe it was black star gravel that was originally proposed, so we went to a local supplier here in the area and looked at multiple different riprap styles and sizes to get a sense of texture, design, and that's what you see in this image right here. So here are our landscape plans that were reviewed and improved by TechDOT up at Red Bluff, where we have a little bit more green space. You know, we can insert a little bit more reforestation with that plant pallet. So up here, you'll see more reforestation areas, and then as you go down the 146 corridor south, you get tighter. We had obviously this big white area that you see there is a huge pipeline easement. Not much we can do inside that easement unfortunately, along with a transmission line that we have to, you know, stay away from too. So where we, where we could, we had reforestation mix and then a native grass mix as well that you'll, you'll see. Continued with reforestation around the detention ponds, any large areas where we had room. Just to give a little background, beyond barrier or concrete curb, anything like that, we have to stay 10-foot beyond that. Transmission lines, again, we have to stay outside that easement. Inlets, drainage ditches, typically four to six-foot off-center lines. So when you start implementing this stuff along this highway, you can see where the design really starts looking like a bunch of rectangles and odd shapes because we're fitting the design to those requirements. Again, here where we could, we had street trees along 146 there, the frontage. We carried this as long as we could. There is a ditch that's out there. Again, we can't put anything within that ditch. So some areas will have these single rows of trees, and then in between the main lanes and frontage, we'll have some native grass mix as well. Continuing on with that, keep going. Then we get to our first intersection. Not a lot we can do up under here with the overpass, so we brought in that riprap retaining wall, our, you know, nautical bollards at this location. As you do come up to the intersection, there is a little pocket of Gulf Coast mulley on either side that'll give you a little pop of color, and then it goes back into a native grass mix, seed mix as we keep going along. This is basically same thing on the south, on, I guess, playing south when you're looking at it. There's a ditch that runs along this area, so it's potentially all sod or a native seed mix. Not a lot we can do with trees. You'll see, I think that is one spot on the top left. There's your pocket of Gulf Coast mulley right in that area. So you have a little pop of color right there at the intersection, and then the rest of it is your pavers and your native grass seed mix. A lot of the same, keep going. And then we get to Nassau Road 1 here. This is where we were able to do the most planting because we had the most area. We wanted to break up the riprap pattern with this planting, so we kept it simple. We have three different plant materials up under there with a palm shrub, if you want to call it a dwarf palmetto, to give you a little pop of that green, Cherokee sedge, and then a ground cover, if I'm not mistaken, orange zexomani, I believe, if I remember correctly. So that's what we did here to play off the riprap, minimize some of that gravel, give you a little bit more pop of color at the intersection. And then down at the channel where we could, again, repeating that theme, a little bit of gravel, a little bit of your plant material. All the plant material will be irrigated. All the trees will be irrigated. We worked with the city on setting those meters for us. We did provide irrigation drawings for the contractor, so, you know, we'll have aisles built for that kind of stuff for maintenance purposes. But for the most part, that is the planting design that we worked on with TechDOT and what was approved, and then what is what you're seeing out there being installed.
Great. Any questions, comments?
Do you have irrigation underneath the overpass?
Yes, sir. All the plant material will have irrigation.
Oh.
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir. We had the contractor out there. We tried to coordinate getting sleeves in, but we were way past that point. So all those were basically bored and sleeved to get to the medians.
What's a sleeve?
It's basically what we did is they get a big boring machine out there, bore up under the road, and then they put a six-inch PVC pipe, and then from that, our irrigation pipe will go in that underneath the road, pop up in the middle, and then irrigate the plant material.
And what kind of irrigation is this?
It'll be drip. Yeah, you will not see irrigation above ground with any of the plant materials. It's all drip. One of, one of TechDOT's requirements too, with being so close to the roadway, they don't favor spray to minimize overspray onto the road system. So all of the irrigation that you see out there is drip, and then the trees will have bubblers. Yes, ma'am.
Can any changes be made at this point?
At this point, we, we had that conversation with TechDOT. We can make changes. It just will not be within the TechDOT contract. What we have, what TechDOT has agreed to, what these plans show, is what they have committed to. They did tell us if we do want to add change after the fact, we can, but unfortunately, that would not be TechDOT's funds. That would have to come from the city.
Well.
Who is responsible for damage that's to, as we go forward? And for example, at Red Bluff, put the grass down one day, next day, 18-wheeler runs over it. Y'all fixed, you fixed it, but in the future, who's going to be responsible for that? Because it doesn't seem that there's any border or any way to stop that from happening.
Correct. So that's part of the agreements when we get to this point where inevitably, when it's all done and the contractor's out of here, that maintenance will turn over to the city. TechDOT will not maintain any of this.
How, how long is that period? Is that one year? How long is that period?
TechDOT's maintenance period typically is a year. Sometimes it's two. I'd have to go back and check, but there is a maintenance period that is typically added to their contract. So they'll have maintenance for a while, but after that maintenance is over, it would be turned over to here at the city, whoever's going to end up maintaining it.
Yes, and our current funding agreement, agreement with TechDOT is 12 months. So after it's, it's completed, signed off, TechDOT will take care of it for 12 months, and then it becomes the city's responsibility.
And while it's under construction, it'll constantly be maintained and repaired by TechDOT.
Did I understand that there's not going to be any baller, the bollards are out?
No, we're actually installing those nautical bollards. It's a part of this package. Yes, ma'am.
And the sails on the side, will they be painted hopefully white?
Yes.
That's actually on the agenda tonight. Yep.
Can you tell us what's in the native grass mix?
Oh, you don't have a plant cut sheet, do you? It's, it's like eight to 10 different varieties. I can definitely get you that information.
And also the tree variety.
Absolutely.
Great.
Anybody else?
Okay. So I'm the one that brought this up. I'm trying to figure out, and this is not on you. The city was supposed to be involved in this negotiation. OST was supposed to be involved with the negotiation, and council. So that didn't happen. So now you're here, and we already here. I heard from the city that it's too late to do anything. You can't make the changes. That's why I'm so upset about it, because I didn't vote for a bunch of rocks. I voted for a green space, and it was even said that this is going to be something like unlike you've ever seen and all that kind of stuff. And I like grasses and plants and all that, and they have that. TechDOT has some rules, but not as strict as everybody's been telling me. Because explain to me then why TechDOT, who built the freeway, has trees and plants all up against that. We have rocks. They look like, you know what, in my opinion. I don't like them at all. Already the riprap's got weeds growing on them. The stalks are that big. So the only way to kill those is with a chemical, and then that'll drain off into the water and kill those little oyster beds or those kind of plants. So this is a joke, in my opinion. I'm that pissed off about it. So I guess I have to, you know, gear a bunch toward our city, not you. But I sure wish we would have been involved and could have given you some guidance to, hey, we want more grass because we were showed pictures, not some of these, but we were showed other pictures with a bunch of grass, bushes, plants, trees, and very little rock. So, because we heard, again, it was told that originally it was going to be a bunch of rocks, and we found out it was super expensive, and we go, hey, grasses and native grasses are a lot cheaper. Now we're back at rocks and this thin little strip right underneath. If you go out there, because it's 22 feet, two inches, anything can grow underneath there. It's 22 feet. You're going to get sunlight, so I don't know why we're not putting more grasses and taking out half that stuff. I guess we're going to have to do this after, but, and I hope again, I'm not mad at Clark Condon, but we spent a bunch of money with you. We thought we were going to get a lot more. We thought we were going to get a lot more plants and stuff like that. So I'm kind of confused why the beds are real narrow. But you're basically telling us that you were told this is what you have to work with, that's what you're going to work with. Is that correct?
We were given the pre-approved, pre-approved plan that I guess SWA had provided and, and were tasked to basically produce these construction documents based off that, implementing text dot standards. The part of, part of what I can say is budget was a big thing with text dot. So we had to play that game a little bit with them. I was able to get more plant material trying to get rid of that rock. But at the end of the day, you know, those guys over there at text dot gave me a budget and we tried to hit it.
Anybody else?
One question.
Yes, ma'am.
I wonder if there's any example somewhere in the, sorry, somewhere in the metro area of anything similar that we could get a look at?
Similar in just what you can do?
Well, that's, that's similar to what's proposed here, so that we can see what it's likely going to look like.
There, there are quite a bit of examples in the metro area. I brought this up with, with Gail and the people we discussed this with. We, I've done a lot of highway work with text dot all over the state. El Paso is, is one of those that there are less plants, more rock. Here, you know, depending on where we're at, we, our office just finished one out in Pearland. If y'all have driven down 288, that is probably the most you could ever do along a text dot highway. However, that was all EDC funded. Text dot had no funding, so we could get away with a lot more. You know, text dot's going to have their landscape and irrigation requirements, and that's what we have to hit. Anything above and beyond their standard items becomes custom, requires money from the city or, you know, a quick, no. So, you know, you can drive all over, 45 north has a little bit of that, 288 I know, I-10 along Energy Corridor, there's a lot of landscape out there in between the walls that are just trees. 99, north of 10, all the way to 45 is another good example of what you could do along there. But again, it's just big blocks of reforestation that they fund themselves. And it's very basic. This, this for text dot with the gravel and the bollards and the lighting that they did and the irrigation that they allowed us to do is above their typical standards. So it, it costs a little bit more than what they were working with. Our original cost estimate for what we were doing was at two, right at 2 million. In the end, it bid, it came in at 1.4 and, and text dot was still a little upset that we were over their budget still. So, I mean, we, we cut out almost 600, $700,000 worth of stuff we could have done because we were way over text dot's budget.
Well, thank you. You know, we certainly have seen in recent years dramatic improvement all over greater Houston in terms of density of vegetation, masking bits of freeway from, you know, while you're driving. And it's very handsome now, now that the trees have grown larger. My concern is with these rather narrow areas here, we may have a lot of maintenance issues that are quite tricky to pull off in those narrow strips. I don't know whether you have any input or thoughts on that. Doesn't this complicate maintenance for going forward?
So at the reforestation areas, especially at Red Bluff, those are in bigger, greener areas. So it's not going to impede visibility or traffic issues, safety issues. So maintenance wise on those is typically what you can see text dot do along the metro area with their highways and they're just trees that, you know, grow. They don't get maintained all that often. They may get pruned once every five years. The native grass seed, once that gets established and starts growing, obviously you won't have to mow that like typical sod. You know, you can mow that once a quarter and let that go a little bit. Yeah, I mean, it, you know, and with, with text dot not maintaining this, we can have it look the way we want. If text dot would maintain this, it would look like, you know, I-10 once you get outside of Katy, just random grass and junk growing everywhere. So even though we didn't get as much as we wanted here, we can get it to look the way we want. The trees that we selected are typical what you see around the, around the area. So I believe that there's sycamore in there, elms, there are live oaks out there. We use those sporadically. We know how big they can get and cause some, some issues. The big thing you'll notice, just to give everybody a heads up, a part of text dot's way they do these things as well is when you see the plant material go in, you might get a little bit more disappointed because they typically only allow three to 15 gallon trees going in. So everything you see out there is only going to be about that tall day one. So it's going to take time to, to see all this grow in. But when it does grow in, a lot of these trees are fast growers. The oaks obviously are not, but you'll see different levels as, as you go down. But it allows us to take control of the maintenance.
Thank you.
The picture that you had up just a few minutes ago shows where the planting will be, which is way back towards the back where it's, the road comes down. Wouldn't it make more sense to have the planting on either side of the concrete as opposed to in the middle?
Which one? Is this, is this the one you're looking?
I was looking, that's more of a realistic picture.
Oh, the 3D?
The planting material is way back in the back where it really doesn't get too much in the way of sun. Shouldn't the planting material be out or up where the iron?
Correct. So the bridge in this image doesn't show what was actually built. So there's a good wide gap in between your bridge spans. So there's a lot of sunlight coming straight down in the middle. So that's why we wanted to keep those in the center because that's where they're going to get the most sun. They are going to get a lot of sun from the side too because the bridge is so tall. So we're trying to put it pinpoint where these plants are going to get the most sunlight throughout the day.
That makes sense.
Yeah, and, and we do have a wall here. So we do have a tube berry, but just remember too, depending on the plant material, there's an offset from the back of the curb. So we got to be 10 feet off that, that curb. Then we have to be 10 feet from the edge of that bridge. So to put a line of trees there is just not.
I was thinking more of.
Shrubs.
Colorful plantings of some sort.
Yeah, we could easily expand those beds all the way out to the edge of that wall in, in all reality.
Okay. In the future, possibly?
Absolutely.
And what about trash? Who's responsible for trash and litter that blows in and will hand?
That's, that's part of the city.
Rocks will collect a whole lot of that. That's text dot?
That would be city.
Thank you.
So any, anything that we do above and beyond what a typical text dot contract would do, so if we weren't not involved with this, the city wasn't involved and it was just text dot doing their highway, it'd be nothing but dirt or a larger, uglier rock up under these or dirt. So anything we add above and beyond what they would typically do automatically triggers, I need an agreement with the jurisdiction and it's your responsibility.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
I didn't clearly understand. There is a side setback, setback of 10 feet from the curb. And you mentioned an additional setback to that.
So when you look at this picture, so you have a 10 foot offset. So take your curb and offset it 10 foot in towards the columns. I can't do anything within that area with, with trees, tall shrubs, ground cover we can get away with. And then look at the bridge itself. In some of these areas, the bridge, when it starts turning, exposes the underside of this area. I still, now you take that bridge and offset it the opposite direction. So I got two offsets coming in and overlapping to where there's a no plant zone.
Thank you.
Specifically where you have something planted under an underpass? Where else is that around here?
So this planting is strictly here at this intersection and we do have two spots of it down at the channel.
At the channel?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Tom.
The reservoirs that are on, on Red Bluff, too, right? Where is that water going? Where is, where's, where's the outflow?
Gail, do you remember where? I know they, they went round and round on this.
Yeah, it, it feeds in back into Pine Gully. There's, I don't know where it ends as far as the text dot, but a lot of that goes to the second detention pond, which connects to the strip that's by just south of like where the subway retail center is, goes diagonal and then into Pine Gully. So there, there's a split. I'd have to kind of bump that to text dot, but some of it's going to Pine Gully, some of it's in their system, so.
So how, how does that flow affect Pine Gully? I mean, who, who knows that answer? How, how does the flow from that affect Pine Gully? Or is it?
That would.
And be a lot of water, obviously.
It can. That would be, oh, Sean, Sean knows the answer.
So those are detention ponds. So they're being, all that water's being detained at the same rate prior to it was being developed. So it's not impacting the water surface elevation within Pine Gully because it's being reduced, it's being released at the same rate that it was being relate, released in the Pine Gully prior to all that development. So those pipe, those lakes have restrictor pipes in them, so all the water comes in and it's being released at the same rate. So it's not impacting the water surface of Gully. If that makes any sense.
Okay, I'll, I'll leave it at that. I have other concerns about that. I think we have some, you know, pollution issues at, at that point, but I'll leave it at that for now.
Anybody else?
All right. Mayor, two more point, just to reiterate, we did have a meeting with text dot. So to reiterate what Brandon said, the text dot did give us an answer that on this project, they will close it out if the city would want to reengage. We'd go through the same process. We would need a consultant to do plans, modifications, plan sheets. We draw up another agreement with text dot and that would be city funding. The other request from council at that meeting was to look at maintenance costs. So right now we're working with some vendors that are prebid that do work on the text dot corridors throughout the metroplex area. So existing, there's what I call Cadillac all the way down to probably a, whatever you want to call the, the lower end. The costs can be widely different based on the budget. This is, we've talked with EDC. EDC did fund those initial costs. So as we get closer to the end of that year mark, we'll be talking about this during budget, get a true, trued up quote. But right now we're somewhere in the range of probably about 80 to 120. And this would be more of a Cadillac, almost biweekly picking up of trash, a lot of hand work on this one. So if we were to add maintenance, talking a little bit with the vendor, obviously depending on how much square footage we're looking at adding, this cost could go up considerably because most of the cost is going to be on first few years of weeding the landscaping area. And they'll take a little bit more time instead of just the Bermuda that they're going to do really fast cuts on, so.
On the beds, do you put the weed, weed sheets down before you plant?
Yes, there's, there are, in our detail, we have a weed barrier prior to the installation of that, yes. Just to piggyback on the maintenance thing, you asked if there's other examples. I use the Pearland example a lot because it's, it's really the most we've ever done along a highway. We had 4,000 to 5,000 trees, over 70,000 shrubs, a lot of other things. It's a three mile stretch down and back. That maintenance a year is about 1.4, 1.5 million, just to give you a, a cost of scale.
Anyone else?
Will the staff, public works staff be doing the maintenance?
No.
You can put down all the weed barrier you want, but those netting, you're still going to get weeds. You ever seen the weed seed? It's so, it's almost microscopic and they're already there because they blow in with the cars that are already driven by. And the proof is between Nassau 1 and the bridge, the Seabrook Bridge over the channel, on the right-hand side in the riprap, there's already weeds that are about as big as my wrist. You know, they're already about five feet tall. They look terrible. It looks bad and I, you know, I don't know how you're going to get rid of them, but just doesn't look good already. And people are already asking like, well, wait a minute, what? Just very frustrating.
Anyone else?
I'd like to just say native grasses and weeds are not distinguishable. Native grasses are weeds. Weeds are native grasses. So it kind of depends how we look at this. If we're happy to have shaggy looking native grasses growing throughout, we have very much lower maintenance costs to contend with. If we expect things to look manicured, maintenance costs will be quite an issue. So exactly what we regard as weed may need consideration and maybe we don't want to be putting down too many barriers.
While we're on the barriers, I happen to agree with Joe. One of the things that happens, I've had to deal with barriers and weeds. The weeds grow into the barrier, then you can't pull and, and get rid of the weeds. They are restricted. So you might want to consider, we might, if there's any way of saving some money by not putting down the weed barrier, I would recommend it.
Do we hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
One in favor. Thank you very much for being here. I didn't know where we were going.
Thank you.